The hardest day of the week.
I know.
Five days we've worked to be here.
Change that.
We need to get Michelle on camera on some elements of caution.
Okay. And you want to.
I'm only on line. We didn't even hear you talk.
You're on agenda. You don't have to do anything. So Jeremy, what is your job position now?
Job still the supervisor.
You still have a job. You just have to give weekly account of what you do or?
The five.
Ethan's dealing with the correct meeting.
Yes. Can you work Monday?
It's the same code as the one that we have last. Well, I'm glad you're there. I'll mention something in my report to that. That one. We're not the only ones that are frustrated about. It must be right because John Holmes is in. So. Home to check again. It was very.
He's using five one eight.
Current.
Nine. Getting my correct passcode. We might be using it all.
Yeah. So I'll tell you. Okay, I have to figure out where do I am I going to go. Where. I go here. Live stream. I don't like waiting for one second.
Figure out how they're. Hmm, this John really willing.
I don't know what my password is. This one might not go on.
I was just doing a. They're picking up earlier. Well, I haven't seen. Wait. One is off. Oh, agenda had a one is off. agenda seven nine four three.
Two.
Two one eight two three.
Yeah.
I sort of put eight seven nine five three two.
Nine four three. Or five being four.
I typed. I typoed it's eight three seven nine four three two one eight two three.
So I think I copied and pasted it right from.
Yeah. And we have other people on, so it is working.
So. So eight three seven.
Nine four three two.
Eight three seven.
Nine four three two eighteen twenty three.
Eighteen twenty three.
Password five one eight.
If you're doing every single day literally to my life right now.
I know.
And I'm sorry I'm not there in person.
Oh, it's letting you in. We'll see that you're okay.
We're okay.
All right, sir.
All right.
We ready?
Then we didn't eat that night.
All right, everybody please stand for the Fledge of Leavens. You're still. Fledge of Leavens.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, in attendance today, we have Council position one Ethan Lane via Zoom. Council position three Jeanne Miles. Council position four Jason Peters. And I am Jesse Bugis, your mayor. Before we begin, let me remind those in attendance that this is that it is important that the recording of this meeting be clear and understandable. Please silence any noise producing devices such as cell phones at this time. If you would like to converse among yourselves, please feel free, but you must leave the chamber if you do so. And please go past at least a set of swinging doors. You may come and go as you please. Also, let me remind you, those who wish to speak tonight during public comment will need to fill out a yellow public comment card found at the table in the back of the room. When the meeting is open for general public comment, which is agenda item four, you should first bring your completed card to the front and hand it to our city administrator. You will be called to approach the podium. You have three minutes to make your comments. We good?
We're good.
All right. To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to request council to approve adding agenda item nine A, resolution nine nine six. This is a resolution adopting the system development charges mythology dated February twenty twenty five. This is a step that we need to take before hearing ordinance to change your SDCs. At this time, I am seeking a motion in a second to approve adding nine nine six as agenda item nine A.
I'll make that motion.
No second. Roll call, council one.
Aye.
Council three.
Aye.
Council four, aye, mayor both aye.
Motion to add resolution. Where does it nine nine six to the agenda passes four zero.
Public Works Director update Alex is not here today. Do we have an update in the packet? I didn't see one.
Yes. Yeah, there's one in.
Why did I not see the update?
Big and pretty.
It was very, very, very.
So we we won't go over the update, but I am going to start sharing these. So I will take these and share them to our city social media page. So if you're interested on the public works update, you can check the social media pages tomorrow morning and they will be there. Agenda item two, the consent agenda. Including minutes of previous meetings, planning update, park use requests, Siskiyou Clinic, annual pet parade on May third, twenty twenty five. Requiring the entire use of the park with amplified sound. At this time, I would seek a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
Some move.
You are making.
A second.
I am making said motion.
Ethan, was that a second?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Perfect roll call, position one.
Aye.
Actually, I skipped a step. Is there any further discussion, council one?
No further discussion for me.
Council three. It's not.
No discussion.
Council four, no discussion. None for me, so now we will call roll, council one.
Aye.
Counselor three.
Aye.
Counselor four, aye. Mayor both aye.
Motion to approve consent agenda passes four zero.
Agenda item three, council liaison reports. Is Teresa here?
He's not on Zoom.
He is not on Zoom. All right, so we will start with councillor Lane liaison updates.
Nothing major this month. I attended IVFD board meeting last week. I was unable to attend the. Steering committee meeting for Ivy Hope Village and that's all I have today.
Counselor Hurd.
I've got a couple of things. I attended Lipstick on February thirteenth. Again, I was the only one from our city there. There was it was quite interesting in that we needed to do a have an executive session for a topic. And I'm not sure I can discuss it now because it was an executive session, but it was quite interesting. We have a new leader in Lipstick, so it was it was kind of interesting. Just so that you know, the IV Safe House Alliance has two federal grants awarded for housing. Totally, these are three year grants, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's good for our valley. Yay. So I thought that was that was a nice thing to hear. I did not attend the small cities meeting last week in Gold Hill as much as I wanted to be there. I was not feeling it, so I decided after eight years, I don't have to attend every single meeting. So I didn't. And but I did yesterday attend Jeff Merkley's town hall at Road Community College. Fascinating meeting, great. There was a session before there were like seven of us, including John there. That met with the senator for a half an hour, which was way cool. And he wanted to know specifically what our concerns were. And my number one concern, and I spoke up right away because. He. It was mentioned that concerns about wildfire. And with the national situation, the way it is and jobs and everything else and allocations being adjusted and. And kicked out. I said, we're really concerned about wildfire season. That affects all of us here in Oregon and especially us when we have one way in, one way out. Also, I want to commend Chief Holmes. I see him online. He was given a copy. He was given a flag. He was recognized by Senator Merkley and given a flag that is blown over the Capitol, which was kind of cool. So it was really nice to see the IVFD being recognized and he and Cameron is smiling. We were both there and they represented us well. So I'm proud of you, John. Good work. Other things is that it was really funny when we got in the big town hall. By the way, I've been to several town halls with several politicians for a long time. This one was crammed full. I mean, there was not any extra room anywhere. It was. And what was most amazing about that is that he got applause constantly. He talked about at the beginning of the meeting, he talked about the Oregon way being civil at all times, even if you disagree with what someone has to say. Then he talked about the key to democracy is checks and balances. Three things for people to do that are unhappy with what's going on nationally because that's what people brought up. Be involved, protest, join an affinity group. And I'm thinking of our citizens for responsible government is a group that's here in our county. Anyway, he just said all kinds of things that were really interesting and I feel very, very good that he is representing us well. And not afraid to speak up where it is needed. He kept saying, you have to be a rebel sometimes. You have to stand up and make the little statements. For example, he says, nobody that goes through TSA should want their picture taken because otherwise they end up in this database or whatever. And so he says he always opts out of that and he encourages everybody else to opt out. I guess it makes things harder to get through, but I don't know because I don't fly, so. One of the things he said that I thought was quite interesting, a law is not a suggestion. And a president is not a king. And I thought that was quite an interesting statement come from a sitting senator. He he was there for. Over an hour meeting with everybody and he just wore the same flower shirt I've seen him wear at all the other town halls. And he's just a really nice guy. I was very impressed. So his field rep wants to come out and have lunch out here in the valley. So I think I'll be invited to come soon. So anyway, those are the two big things that I had. And let me tell you, if you're going down one ninety nine, Slate Creek is really quite interesting to see. It may be much better today. Yesterday I was really afraid we weren't going to get back home safely. But we did so. And there are places in the county that have it a lot worse than us. I'm sorry, I'm done.
Council four.
Yes, I was at the district meeting two meetings ago, and then I happened to watch the last district meeting via the internet slightly quite a quite a bit more than.
I verified district meeting for district seven school district. Sorry about that.
And I got to tell you, I was there was nothing directly reported that will affect us. However, some of the comments were pretty powerful from some of the peoples and the things they had to say. The recognition for students was phenomenal. I really appreciate it and was really able to see some of these youth get up there and get presented awards and you know, see their accomplishments and hear from them. The last meeting, the most recent one, there was lots of discussion pertaining to books in our school system. It was. Very widely shared on the internet as well. I can tell you, the books that were discussed in that video are not in our local library. They're not in our school library at Hornburg. So pat somebody on the back who works there. I think they've done a really great job. The school can manage their books. There are lots of rules and requirements and stuff about checks and balances for some of those books being in there. So pat them on the back as well. So overall, I think their meeting really, really well. Discussion was great, questions from the board members was phenomenal, phenomenal. And it was a packed house both times that that meeting took place. If you haven't been to a district meeting, I would recommend going, especially if you have children.
Super entertaining on the internet as well. I was also attending. So I have no liaison updates at this time that are relevant to anything that is city business. So we will close the section and move to public comment.
No one is online and I have not received a yellow card.
Okay, so we can just go to agenda item five, correct?
Yep.
All right, agenda item five, IV chamber Megan Curtis, dark skies feasibility study.
Perfect now.
I'm like, did I do something wrong?
No, no, I. It'll take a while. So thank you for having us again. I'm excited to share in that game about our visibility to the start feasibility study. It is about gathering information. Super important. We're calling this step zero, which comes even before step one. It's our chance to connect with you and the community on an idea before it's really even an idea. So last year, Travel Oregon launched a new recreation program to help communities for conceptual ideas. We learned about the opportunity in the fall of twenty twenty four and with board approval and encouragement from Travel Southern Oregon's Executive Director Bob Plaskett, which he verified. Out of hundreds of organizations across the state, including nonprofits and other chambers of commerce, the Illinois Valley Chamber of Commerce was selected as one of only four participating teams. Now with our selection confirmed, we've started working closely with Travel Oregon staff and people to begin this process. Our first point of contact is you, the city. So that's why we share this exciting opportunity publicly at the February twenty twenty five. And why we're here again to follow up and explore the possibilities of bright streets and dark. A key part of the feasibility study is a public meeting to discuss step zero with residents, business owners and city officials. That's why we're thrilled to announce tonight executive chamber and travel organs will be co-hosting with public meetings at our newly renovated Illinois Valley Ranch Library on Tuesday, April eighth from five to seven P M. Food and drinks will be served. In fact, we're asking for R S V T currently to make sure we order enough from one of our local. Let's look at the basis chart. So there are only fifty five dark sky communities in the world and a few Oregon communities have recently introduced their services. Sisters with accreditation just as fast January, Antelope in November of twenty twenty four and Lake County, Warwick and Alfax in twenty twenty two. Not to mention our very own Oregon State National Monument Reserve became a dark sky park just last year. And currently gathering data on how the dark sky accreditation is impacting tourism in these areas. The feasibility study will help us gather initial information about the cost impact activities and residents. Most lighting changes involve simple solutions like retrofitting lamps or adding curtains. And there's a five year phase in period for city owned lights and ten years for private property owners. So any adjustments will be gradual. Notice these because we're already a rural community with naturally dark skies. We may need only minimal changes, but again, that's what the feasibility study is helping us identify. So when we envision lighting changes, we're thinking about long term plans. Most lighting systems need updates every fifteen to twenty five years. So this could be a great opportunity to make bright streets, dark sky choices that reduce light pollution without compromising safety, security and of course, budget conscious choice. Bright streets and dark skies are about directing light where we need it, like downward facing fixtures instead of one that's shining in all directions. Generally, it seems like a lot of our lights are already all direct. Our upcoming initial review of the fixtures and vehicles sharpen our estimates of directional lighting, which actually improves visibility, reduces glare and ensures places like businesses, parking lots, walkways and parks stay well lit and safe. Cape Junction is actually in a really strong condition already. We can see the stars at night in downtown cities. The fact that we can see so many stars from right here in town is a huge advantage. The gateway to the start feasibility study will help us align any adjustments with long term community development planning goals. It's also important to note that local events are exempt from conforming to dark sky light pollution guidelines. Events such as the factory festivals, art walks, sporting events, holiday festivals and holiday displays are all considered temporary activities that come and go. The lights turn on and then go off. They would not be subject to dark sky guidelines. The focus is on permanent lighting, such as streetlights or signage, ensuring light is directed where it's needed while we can flare and unnecessary light emissions. Temporary found lighting stays exactly as it is, temporary. But do we need certification to host gargaining events? No. However, dark sky accreditation is a powerful marketing. It brings in funding, tourism and recognition, making events more successful and boosting local economy, providing a big assist in attracting visitors and tourism goals. Certification is about elevating what we're already doing and making the junction a destination for dark sky tours. As I mentioned before, the feasibility study is only step zero, gathering information. And we would love for you to be part of the conversation. So just as a reminder, we wanted to invite you all to join us for the community gatherings at the Illinois Valley Ranch Library on Tuesday, April eighth from five to seven P M. Don't forget the food and drinks will be provided for free. Please be sure to R S V T so we know how much food we need to order. We truly appreciate your time again tonight and I look forward to your thoughts, questions tonight.
Thank you, Megan. So real quick, council, I am I am unavailable April eighth due to a high school baseball commitment. I get a volunteer to Jean Anne will represent the city and be at the library. So she is officially letting you know now that she will be.
Thank you all so much. We really appreciate you.
All right, do we you can stay there. So by all means. Questions from council.
I just want to jump in and say that I'm I'm excited about this and I think that this is something that our community really could use. Definitely a win. And I'm thankful for for Megan and Chris and their ability to get this ball rolling. So this is this is a pretty cool thing that we're trying to take a hold of here.
No, I think I'm going to attend and I'm going to ask some questions there because those questions are really going to pertain to that meeting and instruction. So thank you for sharing.
Thank you. We really, we're glad they're going to be here.
My question has to do with. Your feasibility study. I'm assuming that's going to be light meters going around and seeing what we have established, getting a baseline. How is that working?
It's not actually going to create a baseline, so. We're going to do like a a light recon, not an actual lighting improvement. So you know, we'll take a look at downtown and see, you know, how they're phasing, what kind of lights are in there. But we will have a couple of light meters that Travel Southern Oregon has purchased and we will allow it to be.
So will we be able to find out specific. Fixtures that are not compliant? Or how does that part work?
So Christopher Hall, General Commerce. There's two phases of this type of work. The first phase would be myself and Megan and and we'd be doing a daytime survey where you can get a lot of information like, oh, there's a light that just translated everywhere. It's sort of like these do. Or there's one that looks like it's well fitted or something. So there's some surveys we can make and assessments you can make just kind of looking around and we'll take some pictures with our phones and everything. But then there are questions that we can't get unless we actually see them at nighttime. And those will be more specific and it'll still be a relatively general assessment so that we have a fairly good idea of what we're dealing with. If we were to move past the feasibility study more into the implementation phase, which will of course, that's going to be iterated. We've only ever come when the city was like one hundred percent compliant. Then there would be a consultant who would come in and would be much more specific and she would have a little spreadsheet. She would have it all worked out. We have a copy of what she's done before. And that's where they actually can get the dollars, donuts and really figure out how much it's going to, you know, the scope of the project and what it would look like for residents and for. And for the city itself. And as Megan mentioned, we're we're not met for we're not friends past. We're rurally isolated and so we have this going for us already. And we're very reasonable. We realize that if this wasn't workable, then it's just not workable. But if it is, then we'll get back and look for it.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm I'm excited. I'm bummed that I can't be there on the eighth, but I'm looking forward. That would be great because I'll I'll be coaching a varsity baseball team at that same time, but it's the council to be there. I promise you have my word, I will go back and watch. And I appreciate, you know, we had sat down and then Chris brought in some documentation. I want to let you know that I really appreciated the fact that you put your due diligence and answered the questions that I had proposed. There were a number of them. Some of them were harder than others and you guys did a great job and we're looking forward to seeing seeing what the feasibility study shows.
We really appreciate that input very, very much.
Okay.
Right back.
Because of the baseline.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Ethan.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, next we have item agenda six, the Vietnamese American Heritage and Freedom Proclamation. So I received an email from a gentleman asking if I was willing to do a proclamation regarding the Vietnamese Heritage and Freedom Flag as the official symbol of the Vietnamese American community in the city of Cape Junction, something that the state has also recently recognized as well. Several surrounding cities and I agree. And so I'm going to read the proclamation in full now. The proclamation recognizing the Vietnamese Heritage and Freedom Flag is the official symbol of Vietnamese American community in the city of Cape Junction. Whereas fifty eight thousand American servicemen and servicewomen that include eight hundred and ten soldiers from the state of Oregon and nearly three hundred thousand South Vietnamese soldiers sacrificed their lives for freedom in Vietnam. And whereas the former Republic of Vietnam flag design was incorporated in the Vietnamese Service Medal created by President Lyndon Johnson. And whereas the hundreds of thousands of Vietnamese who have resettled in the United States have made positive contributions to the historical culture, educational, economic prosperity in their local communities and military service. And whereas Vietnamese Americans remain vigilant in opposing tyranny of all forms, actively supporting human rights for all people and celebrating the principles of democracy and justice. And whereas the flag of the former Republic of Vietnam with three red stripes upon the field of gold symbolizing resilience, freedom and democracy of Vietnamese Americans in the United States in the city of Cape Junction. And is embraced and recognized as the United Symbol by twenty states, fifteen counties and a hundred and eight cities. Now, therefore, the common counsel of the city of Cape Junction does hereby recognize the Vietnamese Heritage and Freedom Flag as the official symbol of the Vietnamese American community in the United States. Submitted signed by the mayor of Cape Junction on this date. This date.
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth of March twenty twenty five. I would, I don't think I need to, but I am welcoming any comments from council regarding this proclamation. Council one.
No comment. I agree with it wholeheartedly.
Counselor three.
When I was a youth. Long time ago. We had a neighbor that was of people that came over in the boats. And I was always impressed at what hardships they must have had. And and it was kind of fun helping them acclimate to an American way of life. And I imagine here it would be much more difficult than it was even then there because it was a much more popular thing. And we lived in Southern California where there were many more resources. So up here to be able to recognize this community and the contributions, again, it's another form of diversity that is good for our community. Thank you.
Counselor four.
I think this is an excellent way to recognize them. So absolutely.
Perfect. All right. Next, agenda item seven. Resolution nine nine five, a resolution increasingly park painting deposit and key deposit. City Administrator. Uh, city administrator recorder, please read the reservation, the resolution in full.
Resolution, excuse me, nine nine five, a resolution amending charges for Jubilee Park users' deposit fees for park rentals. Whereas reservations for park use will be accepted by city staff. Said reservations are not secured until park user fees and deposits have been paid in full. And whereas park user fees are not refundable. Now therefore be resolved that the Jubilee Park user fees will be set as follows. A cleaning deposit and key deposits. A cleaning deposit for all rentals within Jubilee Park will be one hundred dollars. A key deposit of twenty-five dollars for each key will be required. Cleaning deposits will be refunded. Only when city staff have inspected the rental area to determine that the area is sufficiently clean and that no damages have occurred. Key deposits will be refunded only when the keys rented have been returned. Be it further resolved that resolution nine nine five supersedes and takes precedence over any prior resolutions designating park user fees and park user fee deposits. This is resolution nine nine five, a resolution amending charges for Jubilee Park user deposit fees for park rentals.
I am actively seeking a motion in a second, resolution nine nine five.
I was trying to do that. I hereby, um. Hope we will adopt resolution nine nine five. I'm sorry, make a motion.
For a court.
In a second then. Any further discussion? Counsel one.
Nope.
Counsel three.
No.
Counsel four?
Yep.
No discussion at this time. Roll call. Counsel one.
Aye.
Counsel three?
Aye.
Counsel four?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye.
Motion to approve resolution nine nine five passes four zero.
Agenda item eight, ordinance six one three, amending twelve point one two sidewalk construction to repair to meet insurance liability requirements. Today will be the first of two readings for this ordinance. City admin, please read ordinance six one three in full.
Ordinance six one three, an ordinance to amend Cave Junction Municipal Code twelve point twelve sidewalk construction and repair. Whereas the city of Cave Junction is insured by City County Insurance Services, C I S. And whereas C I S, based on recent litigation, advises and recommends modification of various city codes to limit or remove liability and protect the city's interests. And whereas C I S has reviewed the city's sidewalk ordinances and is recommending modification of such. Now therefore, the common council of the city of Cave Junction ordains as follows. One, the Cave Junction Municipal Code twelve point twelve sidewalk construction and repair is amended, hereby amended to read as follows. And the changes have been provided in exhibit A and changes are in red. I'm not going to read. This is rather extensive. Um, number two, this ordinance amendment shall be in full force and effect immediately from and after its passage by the council and approval by the mayor of the city of Cave Junction. This is ordinance six one three, an ordinance to amend Cave Junction's municipal code twelve point twelve sidewalk construction and repair.
At this time, I'm seeking a motion to.
We have to read it again, so we don't do a motion this time.
So that's in three.
Exactly.
So we just moved to agenda nine point five?
Yes.
Do we not have any discussion on, on this in the first reading?
Yes, you can have discussion.
Okay, let's, no, you're okay. Let's open discussion for agenda item nine, which is ordinance six one three. Uh, counselor length.
I, I was only curious because I read through this and I, I don't disagree with it, but I was curious about like, um, existing deficiencies to the sidewalk. And how does that work for? What we're, what the sidewalk should be? Does that make sense? Did I frame that right?
No, you did.
So would you like me to answer?
Sure.
It is only new or change. And so if it's an existing sidewalk, then it goes by the existing code until it has been altered and then it would need to be brought up to current code.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That excludes mains.
Correct.
Correct.
Uh, counselor three, any discussion? Counselor four?
No, I'm answering. Perfect.
All right, uh, Ethan, was that it?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. All right. Agenda item nine point five, resolution nine nine six, adopting system development charge methodology dated February twenty twenty-five. City administrator, please read resolution nine nine six in full.
Did we skip number nine?
No, we just did.
So I'm messed up here. Yeah.
Oh, no, we didn't.
Yeah.
Nope, hang on. That was on me. I apologize. That was agenda item eight was the sidewalks. Agenda item nine, ordinance six one four. Amending, uh, code one three point zero two point zero six four to update increased balance allowances for payment agreements. Are we back on track now?
We are. Thank you.
You are welcome. Today will be the first of two readings of this ordinance. City administrator, please read ordinance six one four in full.
And just for the record, the reason we are hearing these ordinances twice is because. The charter states that if we don't have a full council, ordinances must be heard twice. The only way we can pass an ordinance on one meeting is if we have a full council and in fact, all five council members vote the same. So this is ordinance six one four, an ordinance to amend Cave Junction Municipal Code thirteen point oh two oh six four recovery of user charges. I found this during code and I'm just trying to clean things up as we go a little bit at a time. Whereas the city of Cave Junction updates its municipal code periodically to meet current account balance variations. And whereas municipal code thirteen oh two oh six four B provides for repayment periods based on account balances. And this amendment increases those previous balances. Now therefore, the common council of the city of Cave Junction ordains as follows. Section one, the Cave Junction Municipal Code thirteen oh two oh six four recover, uh, recovery, missing a Y there. Of user charges is hereby amended to read as follows. The city may establish a payment plan with the customer at their request for retroactive charges only. Current charges for services do not qualify for extended repayment periods. For residential and multifamily classes of service, the payment plan will not exceed a twelve month period when the charges exceed three hundred dollars. When retroactive charges total less than three hundred dollars, the repayment period shall not exceed three months. For all other classes of service, the payment plan will not exceed a twelve month period when the charges exceed six hundred dollars. When the retroactive charges total less than six hundred dollars, the repayment period shall not exceed three months. This ordinance amendment shall be in full force and effective immediately from and after its passage by the council when approval by the mayor of the city of Cave Junction. That's ordinance six one four, an ordinance to amend Cave Junction Municipal Code thirteen point oh two point oh six four recovery of user charges.
We'll open a floor now for discussion. Uh, we're going to go to reverse order, counselor four.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, clarification on, uh, the reading of that. It says, um, for residential multifamily class services. The payment will not exceed twelve, the payment repayment period will not exceed twelve months for charges that exceed three hundred dollars. But down below, then it says if charges are. Six hundred dollars when retroactive charges are less than six hundred dollars, repayment shall not be exceeded three months. I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around.
Okay, so the first part of it is about residential properties whose bills are typically smaller.
Yes.
So if they have a three hundred dollar or less bill, then their payment plan can be three months.
Is that for one month bill or is that for the total?
No, so this is typically, this paragraph is used in the event of a break. Um, if, and, and otherwise people have to stay current in their bills. So that's what this provides for.
This does not give the standard user an opportunity to go on a payment plan.
Unless they're. Not at today. Past chart. No, that's not what that means. I'm not going to clarify then.
Yes, and, and that, it does state that retroactive, after press for, this is retroactive charges only, so. And again, this paragraph is only used when someone has a break and their bills are larger than expected.
But it is retroactive, so it's, we currently don't accept payment plans with the city, so it's going to be a pre-existing bill.
We do accept, we do accept payment plans.
Well, yes, but it's by retroactive. You explained it to me perfect. I'm trying to remember the terminology that you had used when I had asked you a similar question that really made it easy for me to wrap my head around. Do you remember what you had said?
No.
Well, darn it, Becky.
But keep going and it might come to me.
The difference between retroactive and passitive.
Right, so if you're late on your, if you're late on your water bill by a month, you can't come in and say, okay, I'm, I. You can't. Got it. Okay.
Correct. If you are thirty days. If you've received a late notice in your bill and you know that you can't pay that on the due date, you can come in and ask for a payment agreement and get an extension of a few days.
Is that what this?
But, but that is not what this is about. What this would be is if you were a customer and you had a water break and your bill went from ninety-five dollars a month to four hundred and fifty dollars a month. So then you come to the city and say, I've got this big bill. There's no way I can pay this right now. Can I use a payment agreement? And then this paragraph determines what we can offer to you. And the reason I made the change, I actually, I think I included the old code. It used to be a hundred and fifty dollars. Well, darn, one bill is almost a hundred and fifty dollars. So it needed to be upgraded a little bit to fit today's expenses.
Do we have a way of identifying breaks?
We do.
Okay.
That's a, a different time and a different conversation.
Yeah.
But it's a good one and call me and I'll talk to you about it.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I should come in.
You could actually tell all of us at some point.
Any other questions? Counselor? No, we're good. Counselor three?
No, no questions.
Counselor one?
No questions.
Mayor has no question. We ask them all we want.
So we'll, we'll hear that again next month.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so now we are on S B C, correct?
Yes, and this is the agenda item that you requested.
Yep. Agenda item nine point five, resolution nine nine six, adopting system development, uh, charge methodology dated February twenty twenty-five. Becky, please read resolution nine nine six in full.
Resolution nine nine six, a resolution to adopt system development charges methodology dated February twenty twenty-five. Whereas system development charges, S D Cs, are an important funding source for public utilities, transportation and park infrastructure. And are to be applied to new development to help offset the impacts to public facilities. And whereas the city of Cave Junction must invest in public infrastructure in order to support new development and growth within the community. And whereas the current methodologies and processes employed in the development of S D C have served the city of Cave Junction well. But require updating to meet current expansion expectations and growing costs of infrastructure. And whereas the new S D C methodology has been thoroughly evaluated and it has been concluded that it accounts for future capital improvement. Necessary to meet standards required for the city of Cave Junction to continue providing services. That last and goes away. Now therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of Cave Junction hereby, number one, accepts and adopts the system development charges. Methodology of Cave Junction dated February twenty twenty-five drafted by Civil West Engineering Services Incorporated. And two, this resolution will take effect immediately and all necessary actions will be taken to implement the new S D C methodology. With a focus on the city's long-term goals of efficiency and quality. Passed by the common council of the city of Cave Junction this seventeenth day of March, twenty twenty-five. That is resolution nine nine six, a resolution to adopt system development charges methodology dated February twenty twenty-five.
Well, I'm not the only one in trouble there. Um, so this one shows that we have a vote here. So no two readings required on this?
Correct. This is a resolution.
Perfect. That's what I was, uh.
I will make the motion that we approve, uh, uh, resolution nine nine six.
Perfect. Thanks. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we can open the floor for discussion. We'll go in standard order. Counselor one.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Counselor three.
Was this the long report that we got or is this a short?
This is the short one.
Okay, no questions.
Counselor four? Yeah, um, the payment component of this, was this a stage one where we're, um, progressive?
So what we have to do is first say that we accept the methodology the Civil West did that we talked about at the workshop. And then the next step is to pass an ordinance, which is the law. And then the next step after that is a resolution that establishes the fees.
No question.
Mayor has no questions. All right, that's, uh, let's open for a roll call. We're going to reverse order. Counselor four?
Aye.
Counselor three?
Aye.
Counselor one?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye.
Motion to pass resolution nine nine six passes four zero.
We will see ordinance next month then.
Yep.
All right, agenda item ten, ordinance six one five, amending municipal code title three, system development charges. Today will be the first of two readings for this ordinance. City administrator to read ordinance six one five in full. Becky, you have a vote.
Six, ordinance six one five, an ordinance updating the Cave Junction Municipal Code Title Three, System Development Charges. Whereas the city of Cave Junction recognizes the importance of ensuring that growth and development within its jurisdiction are adequately supported by necessary public infrastructure. And whereas system development charges, S D Cs, are a key tool for funding the cost of public facilities need to serve new development. And whereas the city of Cave Junction has conducted a comprehensive review and update of the S D C and stormwater methodologies and fee structures. To ensure consistency with applicable laws, guidelines and best practices for establishing equitable and reasonable charges. Now therefore, the common council of the city of Cave Junction ordains as follows. Section one, the Cave Junction Municipal Code Title Three, System Development Charges is hereby amended as reflected in exhibit A attached here too. Section two, the system development charges, S. Wow. S D Cs. These shall be assessed as outlined in resolution nine nine four, which we have not heard yet, I think. No. That's coming next. And then section three, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective. Originally, we had set April second because we assumed we would pass this in one. So we'll have to set a new date for that.
From May next month.
Okay.
One of your two meetings.
April. So we'll go May, what, fifteenth? Cause that'll be, when's the next meeting? Next meeting is the twelfth, so it could be effective the fifth one. But you want to go, Jim?
Go to you.
Okay. So that paragraph, section three reads, this ordinance shall be in full force and effective June first, twenty twenty-five. After its passage by the council and after approval by the mayor and the city of Cave Junction. This is ordinance six one five, an ordinance updating the Cave Junction Municipal Code Title Three, System Development Charges.
Next we have agenda item eleven, public hearing, ordinance six oh eight, continued flood hazard protection compliance changes requested to meet current FEMA state standards. I am at this point going to suspend the council meeting and open the public hearing. I'm guessing we do not have Rowan?
Um, we do not have Rowan. However. Rowan was asked to provide any update or feedback that she has received regarding this. This, um, change or proposed change by FEMA and her answers have not heard anything. They released the reporting tool, which I used as a base to make the E S A report form. And I think those are forms that we're supposed to be filling out once this passes, giving them updates of our progress. There was this paragraph in the D L C D email bulletin last week or so, which mentions compliant file and federal, or complaint filed in the federal district court. But it did not have any new details. So someone has filed a complaint about this.
Oh, several people have.
Yeah, so that's where she's at.
Okay. Uh, so we all.
For continuance.
We're getting there. So I'll, I'll make sure I, I tee it up for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Becky, have there been any comments received since our last public hearing of February tenth?
No.
Does anyone in attendance this evening wish to make a public comment on the matter?
There are no hands.
At this time, I would seek a motion in a second from the planning commission to continue the hearing, skipping a month and moving into May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, seven P M. And leave the record open.
That was exactly what my motion was going to be, that we make it in May. So thank you.
So you're making said ma, said motion?
I so move.
Do we have a second?
I second you.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Counsel one?
Nope.
Counsel three?
No.
Counsel four?
Nope.
Mayor hates this, but he has no comments. Okay, so we will, uh, we will call, roll call. Counsel one.
We're voting to continue.
Voting to continue. That's clear, right, Ethan?
Yes, aye.
Perfect. Counsel three?
Aye.
Counsel four?
Aye.
Uh, mayor, no other counsel for the mayor votes aye.
Vote to continue this public hearing for a fourth continuation to the month of May. Passes four zero.
The public hearing has been concluded on May or will, has been concluded. I don't need to read any of that. I just get you a, right, I'm done.
Right, you're done. And Gavel and you can do.
Agenda item twelve, uh, with the continuation just passed, agenda item twelve, we continue to the May meeting. Agenda item thirteen, executive session, then required. Agenda item fourteen, closing comments. We will start with staff.
Okay, so today will be our only council meeting, um, beginning next month. However, we probably will begin our budgeting process, so we'll be scheduling budget meetings and maybe. So we'll be scheduling budget meetings and maybe additional council meetings, which will be announced in advance. This is, these are my old comments. I'd like to remind everyone to check out the city's website, cavejunctionoregon.us and the city's Facebook page. We are using these sources as additional means of communicating special events and or meetings. City hall will be closed at three o'clock this month on thirty-first, which is a Monday, to finish our month's work. Other than that, I don't have any comments.
Counselor one, closing comment.
Um, not much. I do want to remind, um, council that there is going to be the. Um, Illinois Valley Strategic Plan Stakeholder Meeting with Ivy CDO tomorrow. There is a Zoom option. Um, and there's an in-person option, uh, that'll be at the library, so. Um, if you guys are interested, I did send the information to, um, the city recorder and, um, she can pass that along. Or feel free to reach out to me. I can, I can pass it to you as well.
Thank you Ethan, we hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Counselor three.
I think Ethan should stop working so much.
True.
Right? Yeah, I'm sorry for you, dear. Um. Closing comments. I was very in heartened, enlightened or thrilled about the meeting yesterday with Jeff Merkley. Um, everybody there, you looked out at the audience and it was crammed full. They all had gray hair. They were all boomers. They were all angry what's going on at our national, our national level. And they were asking pointed questions as to what they can do and, and. It was, it was really encouraging to know that there are people that want to know. What's happening and how they can affect me. And that was encouraging as a citizen. Um, because. That's what our job is, as a citizen, is to be involved in the process. And it was really nice to see so many people that were there and caring what goes on. Um, along with that, my Gina's gem for the night is a quote from the Lorax by Dr. Seuss. He's one of my favorite authors and I think there are so many words of wisdom that he has written. Unless someone like you cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. And I wish you all peace and love.
Thank you, Gina. Counselor four. No, no comment. Okay. Uh, mayor, closing comments. We, uh, we just passed the thirty-two thousand view mark for our Facebook page for a six week process. So it's, uh, it's getting lots of traffic there. Um, I apologize for having to move the meeting. There were a couple of us that was ill. I, I had my seventh bout of flu and a ruptured eardrum within the last three weeks. And so it's. Has not been a fun time to get better, but I, I think that we're finally healing. Um, I'm spending a massive amount of time here. I think I was the second one here this morning at like seven thirty A M. And I could not be more impressed on our staff. I know I say it on a monthly basis, but we. We are getting stuff done. And if we weren't such an official setting, I'd probably use another word, but I'm very, very happy with what staff is doing. And council, keep it up. We've, uh, we are just scratching the surface on what we're gonna accomplish going forward. Uh, with that being said, I would request a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Meeting adjourned at seven fifty-three P M.
Thanks, team.
Thank you Ethan. Have a great night. Get better.
Thanks you as well.